Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, September 1st, 2022. The time is 1:30 PM. I'm pleased to call to order the regularly scheduled September meeting for the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a beautiful day here in paradise and look forward to the proceedings today. We'll first go ahead and start off with a roll call, please.
Christopher Hagan?
Here.
Christopher Cam- Camara?
Here.
Michael Hyman? Please let the record show Michael Hyman is absent. Michael Wood?
Here.
Alfred Fields?
Here.
Jonathan Burgess?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum present. Please, everyone, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We did receive in our packet the minutes from the June 2nd meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review the minutes. At this time, if there are any additions or corrections of the minutes, I'd like to hear those so those can be made. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. The motion is made by Board Member Wood and seconded by Vice Chair Camara. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Now, we'll move into a report from our Planning Division staff. Mr. Roach?
Good afternoon, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. Don't have anything to report other than you should have received a couple of days ago an email with regards to the revised agenda that at the end of the agenda, the nomination of, or yes, the nomination and election of officers is added under Other Business. So, as our regularly September meeting, the bylaws call for that to happen. So, just before we leave here today, we'll need to go through that process. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'll now move to remarks from the chairperson. I'll just go over the proceedings today and the form in which they're, that will follow in terms of the proceedings. Matters before the ZBA are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation to answer any questions from the board. Then, the applicant will be followed by city staff who will provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, then answer any questions. Then, members of the public will be given the opportunity to provide comment with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. Then, the applicant will have a chance for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed and the board will go into executive session for a discussion, a motion, and then a vote. At this board, four affirmative votes are needed for approval. So, with that, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is a declaration of ex parte communication. I'll remind the board members, a couple of meetings ago, we started off with the procedure that's in the laminated card in front of you, so please go through the steps in that in making your disclosure. I'll start on my left with Board Member Burgess. And do want to note for the record also that Board Member Burgess will be, because there are five of us here today, instead of being alternate, will be participating in and voting in all the matters before us today.
Okay. For all of the items on today's agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I will be recusing myself from the fourth agenda item, which I'll make at that time and step out of the chambers at that point.
Great, thank you. Board Member Wood?
I have not had expert communications, I have not had any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions.
And then, just please read the last sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry.
By request.
I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Vice Chair Camara?
Sure. As to each of the cases before us today, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received any written communications, I have not conducted any investigations, I've not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. And I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And Board Member Fields?
As to the matter of the items on the agenda dated September 1st, 2022, I, Alfred Fields, have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communication, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communication be made part of the record.
Thank you. And as far as my ex parte communications go, as to all the cases on today's agenda, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made any site visits, I have not received any expert opinions. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. With that, we'll move into the public hearing and we'll start off with the swearing in of the speakers. If you wish to speak on any of the cases on today's agenda, please rise and be sworn in.
Please lift your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. We have no continued cases, so we'll move into item C1, well, item 6C1, which is Zoning Board of Appeals Case Number 3414. And I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Dennis Almendares of the Ohana Pet Resort for Class B Special Use Permit with a waiver from Section 94-273B, 81B2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations to allow an animal daycare and boarding facility with an outdoor play area in the Office Commercial Zoning District. The location, the subject property consisting of 0.84 acres is located at 2617 North Australian Avenue within Commission District Number 1 Kathleen Ward.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to the applicant to make a presentation. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Okay, thank you. Forgive me, because I speak much easier with the dogs. Dennis Almendaris, one of the owners of the Ohana Pet Resort, Furs and Feathers Resort doing business at the Ohana Pet Resort. And what you see on the screen there is our existing building, which we have been at for the past six years, wonderful six years, well, five wonderful years. We had one 2020, it was pretty rough. But it's, what's happened around our area, of course, is rezoning and we've had to relocate to another location. We did find a building there in Australia that is close to the city. We service so many residents here at the city. And we found this location and we are now here before you all, asking for a permit to allow for overnight boarding. Overnight boarding is an essential part of an urban development area since so many people do travel, do go out. All of the condos love it because it keeps the noise and stuff and people having their dogs there overnight and the owners aren't there, they would prefer them staying with us. So, we have an upscale type facility, that's why we call it a resort. It does not have outdoor areas for dogs to stay outdoors, so we're mainly an indoor area. However, pets do need to go out to the bathroom, and so we do have to have an outdoor area for them to go bathroom. And that's what we have that outdoor area for. And we're here now just asking for us to continue our business here in the city and move to this location. We will only have one location eventually, we will move out from where we're at over to this building here. I don't know what else, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I think, I know staff will also go over, you know, some of the specific, like, the technical parts of the request that we'll be deciding on today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, like I said, we've been operating for six years, all of the same procedures. Animal Care and Control has always comes by a couple of times a year and checks us out. We always have a very good report card record with them. We do maintain the same standards. We do have our trash pickup for four days a week and double bag everything and keep that going. So, we're going to maintain a top-quality place for the city, so the city's happy. We have over 580 five-star reviews on us, so we're trying to keep up that standard. Thank you so much.
And if you'll stay there, I'll, excuse me, open it up to the board for any questions. I'll start again with Board Member Burgess. Any questions of the applicant?
At your current facility, do you have outdoor play area or outdoor?
It's not an outdoor player, it's an outdoor area so they can go out, do their business. Some dogs, they may need to exercise for a little bit, come in if they're not in a playgroup, but we have three indoor playgroup areas, and that's where they mostly get their exercising and stuff like that. But we do need to have the outdoor area because that's what's common for them, to be able to go outside and use the restroom and come back.
So, I couldn't tell from the site plan whether that outdoor area proposed on the new site is intended to be a fenced-in enclosure?
Yes, sir, it is. It is completely fenced in. All of our area will be completely fenced in. It is with a board-on-board fence, so it's completely private.
Great, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Wood, any questions of the applicant?
No questions.
Okay. Vice Chair Camara?
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Fields?
Just one question. Are you familiar with the recommendations that the staff are making on this particular request?
Yes, sir, we are. It's the same recommendation as six years ago when we opened up our first facility. They are exactly the same. We intend to maintain our good standings and continue the exactly the same way. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And so, yeah, to follow up on that, one of them was that no more than two dogs at a time would be permitted in the outdoor grass area, and you're fine with that. I was curious, just to understand, you know, sort of the, in the scheme of things with this, with this request, what the typical pet census or maximum pet census would be inside the building at, you know, kind of at peak occupancy?
During daycare, they'll probably average between 50 to 60 dogs between the three daycare groups. Boarding averages between 35 to 55, depending on the day and stuff like that.
Okay. And it, so it will be adequate to just have two outdoors at a time with that?
Yeah, we have a staff member that that's what they do all day, is just take the dogs out. And we have a policy, it is a written policy we have, that no dog can be out for more than five minutes at a time. We do that for safety reasons. We have a lot of pugs, bulldogs, short-nosed dogs that are very susceptible to heat. We are in Florida, we have probably five days of winter. So, we keep that policy in place just to be on the safe side for the animals.
Okay. I don't have any further questions at this time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and we'll now, you can have a seat and we'll have staff come up and make a presentation then.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, John Roach, Principal Planner. As indicated by the applicant, this is a request for a special use permit. It is for the property located at 2617 North Australian Avenue. So, that's at the western terminus of 25th Street and Australian. You can see here labeled in yellow, this is an exist, or a previous office building that has remained vacant for a short period of time, and that is what the applicant is proposing to convert into the daycare boarding facility. You can see some of the adjacent uses. To the south is the Lakeside Health Center, which is a skilled nursing rehab facility, the American Lung Association to the north, as well as some multi-tenant office, and then an additional animal hospital. And then, across the street, you have a mix of uses ranging from office, a gas station, convenience store, which actually has come before the, come before the board previously, as well as a church and multi-tenant office and commercial building. So, you can see it sits within a commercial district there on Australian Avenue. It's actually zoned to Office Commercial. The OC zoning district does allow veterinarian clinics and hospitals, as well as animal shelters that are enclosed. However, it is a use that is permitted subject to three additional standards that you can see on the screen there. One of those additional standards is that animal boarding, except to provide treatment, is prohibited. So, overnight stays unless it was part of a vet facility and that animal had received treatment, overnight boarding is prohibited. So, the applicant is requesting to waive that provision or that additional standard, and by doing so, that triggers the special use permit and therefore comes before the Zoning Board of Appeals. The other additional standards they are fully complying with, the other zoning matters they are complying with in terms of parking and things like that, it's all an existing building that will be interior renovations with the exception of the enclosure of the outdoor area. So, here is the site plan, just a little orientation, north is now to the left side of the screen. Again, it's the existing one-story building with the lawn area in front, parking behind. They're not proposing to make any modifications to that site, simply an interior renovation with the exception of enclosing this grass area on the south side of the building. And if you go back to the location map, that outdoor area is here on the south side of the property. So, it's adjacent to the parking lot for the skilled nursing, or one of the parking lots for the skilled nursing. There's a substantial distance between that area and any adjacent buildings, so we feel like that the impact with regards to that outdoor area, in combination with the conditions, would be minimal. With regards to the interior floor plan, again, it's all interior renovations, you have your boarding at the south end of the building, you have your daycare to the north end of the building, and this would be the new door into the outdoor play area. It's staff's opinion that the application complies with all the applicable standards outlined on the screen there. So, we are recommending approval, but subject to the two conditions that were listed within the staff report and are on the screen here. One is with regards to waste removal, and then the second is with regards to the maximum number of dogs that can go into that outdoor play area. That's just from a noise factor and so forth and making sure that we're mitigating and keeping the increase in impact on adjacent properties to a minimum. So, again, staff's recommending approval, subject to those conditions, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roach. I'll start off with Board Member Wood. Any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay. Vice Chair Camara?
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Fields?
No question.
Board Member Burgess?
Yes, regarding the enclosure material, was there discussion about whether that's going to be an opaque fence, how high, is it chain-link fence, what's being proposed for the structure? And I'm asking from an acoustic standpoint if an opaque surface up against the adjacent property line would be more sensitive to any noise concerns or anything like that.
I'm not familiar with anything that was specified within the application and it hasn't been incorporated into the conditions here. It's my understanding based upon the testimony, you know, from the applicant that they are proposing a wood board-on-board fence. That could certainly be added as a condition if that's the, you know, the wishes of the board. But again, based upon that, you know, a wood shadow box is my understanding of what they're proposing.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have no questions of staff.
And just one procedural matter, just a reminder with regards to special use permits, actually requires two motions. You should see them in your packet. First motion is with regards to waiver of the additional standard, whether or not you approve that waiver, and then the second would be the special use permit itself and any conditions that are associated with that. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll start off by opening it to any members of the public who wish to speak. Okay? If you do wish to speak on this matter, please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask staff, were there any emails or voicemails or any other communication received to enter in the record? Okay. Staff's indicating no. So, I'll now close the public hearing. And at this point, we'll go into executive session here at the board. So, I'll start off with Vice Chair Camara, any discussion?
No, no, no issues.
Okay. Board Member Fields?
No, no further discussion.
Any further discussion, Board Member Burgess?
No.
Okay, Board Member Wood?
No.
Okay. Also, no discussion on my end, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion. And remember, staff mentioned there were two, two items or two motions to be made. So, first, I believe it's on the waiver.
Yes.
I have a question about the, there's a waiver standards that are included here. Yeah.
So, the way the motion is drafted is there's a granting of the waivers, which is the first paragraph. The second paragraph is denying the waivers, and the reason those standards are listed under there is that if you were denying, we ask that you specify based upon which standard and why. But if you are granting the waivers, it's simply the first paragraph.
I'll make a motion that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant Zoning Board Appeals Case Number 3414, a request by Dennis Hamardes on behalf of Ohana Pet Resort for a Class B Special Use Permit to allow overnight boarding without needing to provide required treatment. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the applicable criteria in Section 94-36E3 and 4, and Sections 94-273D81B of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of this Class B Special Use Permit is subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff's report dated September 1, 2022. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the, with the purpose and the intent of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. And the two exceptions are facilities shall provide appropriate waste removal measures, fire and smoke detection systems, and always provide an attendant on-site during operating hours. No more than two dogs shall be permitted at a time in the grass area utilized as the outdoor play area.
And before I ask for a second, the motion that was read was for the Class B Special Use Permit. Does it matter which order we take these in?
Yes, sir, we should do the waiver first, so I'd ask that you just not take action on the, on the motion as made.
Can we table that motion and just?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll, we'll table that motion and then the prior page in the packet is the, is the motion for the waiver.
Chair, there was no second to the motion, so actually, it wasn't completed.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, I'll accept the second, yeah. Chair accepts the second, and then we'll, we'll table the motion. So, I'll entertain a motion on the granting of the waiver.
So, I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the waiver for zoning of, Zoning Board of Appeals Case Number 3414 as listed in the staff report dated September 1, 2022. This motion is based upon the testimony presented and the hearing along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of facts that all of the applicable criteria in Section 94-273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Board Member Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Fields. Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask our Board Secretary to call the roll, please.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Camara?
Yes.
Michael Hyman? Let the record show Michael Hyman is absent. Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, so the waiver is approved, five to zero. We had a motion by Board Member Wood and second by Board Member Fields on the granting of the Class B Special Use Permit. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, I'll ask the Board Secretary, Secretary to call the roll, please.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Camara?
Yes.
Michael Hyman? Please let the record show that Michael Hyman is absent. Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. Congratulations and best of luck. Okay, we'll now move on to item number two under the Zoning Board of Appeal Cases. I'll ask the Board Secretary to please call, or please read this item into the record.
A request by John Schmidt of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of 1890 Palm Beach Lakes OPCO LLC for a Class B Special Use Permit to allow for a 4,414 square foot automated car wash within the General Commercial Zoning District. The subject property consisting of 1.16 acres is located at 1890 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard within Commission District Number 2 Shalonda Warren.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll have the applicant, please introduce yourself and make your presentation.
Good afternoon, city board members. My name is Jordan Spurling, agent for the applicant, and today I'll be presenting the proposed MiniCo Car Wash Facility on Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. The 1.16 acre subject property is located at 1890 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard at that southeast quadrant of the intersection of Palm Beach Lakes and I-95 Thoroughfare. The site is currently undeveloped. As you may know, the site last operated as a full-service restaurant. As you may know, it was Olive Garden in 2007. A demolition permit was issued in October of 2019 for the structure serving the former restaurant use, and the site's been primarily vacant since that time. What we're proposing in front of you today is a one-lane, approximately 44, 14 automated car wash facility. The proposed use falls under the motor vehicle, fuel, sales, and service use category, which is a permitted use within the general commercial zoning classification with issuance of the Class B Special Use Permit. And below is a collage of some of the colors and architecture design of the MiniCo Car Wash. MiniCo Car Wash, just so you know, has other facilities in the nearby area, and they're expecting more throughout Palm Beach County in the near future. As previously mentioned, the subject property is located at the intersection of Palm Beach Lakes and I-95. Site access is proposed via a west full-access connection to the existing slip street and a south full-access driveway connection to the south service road. As you can see in the image, customers can access the car wash from the existing slip street from the traffic light off of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, making this a signalized intersection. Just to give you an idea of the surrounding area, to the north across Palm Beach Lakes is the Renaissance Charter School. To the south is a single-family residential, which is further separated by a 60-foot canal waterway and a 20-foot public right-of-way. To the east across I-95 is the Best Buy Department Store, and to the west is a two-story mixed-use office retail building. Just to put it into perspective, the proposed use is set back approximately 200 feet from the residential to the south, which includes that 60-foot waterway and 20-foot right-of-way. This is more of a close-up colored site plan graphic of the car wash, just to get into the site design. As you enter into the site from that slip street I just mentioned to the west, you'll enter into the queuing area, which is, we're showing as a 12-car double-stack queue, as you can see in yellow, where you will wait for your car wash to get washed, and then each vehicle will enter into the wash in a hybrid-type format. Once you exit the car wash, you have three options. Option one is to leave through the existing public alley, as you can see, and make your way to Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. Option two is to make a left for a detailed interior service and for your vehicle after it's washed, and option three is to make a right for free vacuum services for customers. We're providing 10 interior service parking spaces on the east side of the car wash and 14 free vacuum spaces on the west side and five employee parking spaces along the northern property line, as you can see in blue. The site's heavily vegetated on the perimeter, and we'll have colossi hedges around the outdoor courtyard just on the east side of the queuing area. Below is the proposed architectural elevations for the car wash facility. We have our architect here to answer any more detailed questions, but what we try to do is we try to take cues from the modern development along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard corridor. from the modern development along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard corridor, adjusting it to more of a domestic character through the use of materials, textures, and commercial elements. And we try to make it a contemporary style with varied facades in order to be generally compatible with the structures you see every day on Palm Beach Lakes. This slide just shows some of the project data, as I mentioned before, the use falls with under, under the motor vehicle, fuel, sales, and service use category, which is permitted within the general commercial zoning district. The applicants require three parking spaces, we're providing five, as you can see at the bottom left of the screen, and we're providing twenty-four free vacuum interior spaces, as I mentioned. We have city staff's recommendation of approval, the proposed Class B use special permit is in compliance with the city's general use, specific use, and additional use standards. And we're also in agreement with the six conditions located on page two of the city staff report. I had a prior conversation with the project manager regarding condition three, A, where we're proposing hours of operation to be seven P M. to nine P M. seven days per week. City staff has indicated they're in agreeance with this modification and found that the proposed use will not adversely affect this running property, and it's compatible with the surrounding area. The site has been properly noticed within five hundred feet, it was advertised in the Palm Beach Post, and we have our client and development team here to answer any questions you may have, and we respectfully request your support for approval.
Okay, thank you. We'll start off with any questions of the board for the applicant, start off with Board Member Fields, any questions?
Just one question, on the time of operations, can you repeat that information once again, on the conditions?
Yes, as I mentioned before, we're proposing to have seven A M. to nine P M. seven days per week for the Minico Car Wash hours of operation.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Board Member Burgess.
Yes, two questions, one was about the queuing area. I was glad to see that, you know, some of the concerns with a car wash facility in other locations in the city has to do with the queuing stacking distance. So I, I see that there's ten spaces allocated on the site plan and twelve labeled. I wanted to see where those two additional queuing spaces are located.
And we have our traffic engineer to answer any more detailed questions, but we were thinking, as you end up that ten-space double-stack, there's a potential for two additional ones as you enter into the conveyor belt, before you enter in the?
And then they merge together and be one lane into the facility, okay. And the second is, you know, and is more of a, there's going to be a question for staff eventually as well, but for the applicant's benefit, if we were talking later about fuel sales and service being the use code of this facility, and that's the fact that this is a car wash, but not really a fuel sales or service facility, if there were a condition discussed about restricting fuel sales on this site as part of this conditional use approval, would the applicant be in support of an additional condition about restriction of fuel sales and service?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Board Member Wood, any questions of the applicant?
I do, I'm familiar with the site, it actually was an Olive Garden many years ago, and I know that they struggled probably the whole time they were there with ingress and egress, and mostly because Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard has the service roads. And in a lot of cases, they eliminated those service roads east of I ninety-five, but they still exist west of I ninety-five. So my question is that because of the unusual entrance there with ninety-five right there, and you have to, you have to go into the service road in advance, knowing where you're going, do you foresee that to be a problem with, you know, any, any kind of a retail operation there? Or how do you, how do you think that you won't have the same issues that Olive Garden have?
John Schmidt, agent for the applicant, just to understand your question, what Minico typically finds is most, they're subscription-based as well, so primarily all their income comes from the subscription base, that typically is a mile to two miles around this radius. So, you know, they have their location off of Southern, Southern Boulevard, this is going to aid to hopefully take some of the traffic off of that with their kind of hybrid design that they have. So we think we're going to do very well at the site, and it's got great exposure, so we don't see an issue with it.
Is there, as part of your approval process, is there any modification to the service road that you're being required to make?
We've been working with the neighbors on looking at to repave it. There's also some trees that have upheaved some of the neighboring property, so while we're out there, we've been in discussions with them to make some of those corrections out there. But we filled with the additional stacking that we put on there, that the site will work very well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions, the applicant, so at this point, we'll have staff come forward and make a presentation.
Good afternoon, zoning board, and those in attendance and audience, my name is Kevi DeFrank, planner with the Development Services Department, and the case planner reviewing subject case three, four, zero, nine. As the applicant stated in his presentation, the request is for a Class B special use permit to allow for an over four thousand square foot automated car wash facility at the subject property located at eighteen ninety Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, which is a little over an acre in size, currently zoned, general commercial, with the future land use designation of commercial. Now, to give you a better visual representation of the site, I provided the photos on here that I've provided in the staff report. And as you can see, looking southwesterly from Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, and looking northwesterly from the alley. In addition, I have videos or short clips that I took on my site visit. So essentially, it's a vacant property, except for the existing parking lot area. And here is the latest revised site plan that the applicant submitted, and I must say, the applicant's team has made considerable efforts in addressing staff's concerns with the proposed development. And as you can see, this is how they are proposing to improve and develop the site. And staff finds the request complies with all the applicable standards, according to the zoning and land development regulations, and staff recommends an approval of ZBA case number three, four, zero, nine, with the conditions I recommended, but as the applicant stated, they reached out to us yesterday requesting an amendment to condition three, A, to basically extend the restricted hours of operations by an hour, and staff has no issues with that and concurs. And so, for today's motion, staff is recommending, recommending an approval with the conditions as amended today. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeFrank, we'll start off with Board Member Burgess, any questions of staff?
Yes, to finish the thought about the, the concern that could come up with this Class B conditional use approval extending to the use of motorized vehicle fuel, sales, and service, because there's not a, there's a subclassification for car wash, but I, I wasn't clear, if this property was receiving approval today and the facility was sold to someone that was interested in opening a fuel sales and service station, would this Class B conditional approval be automatically granted to that change of use? Or would it have to go back through the Class B approval again? Because it technically would have the use that it's looking for at that point. Because I'm wondering if, if we should, when we get to executive session, discuss adding in the additional restriction for fuel sales as part of this.
From staff's perspective, it would be our opinion that it would have to come back before the board as it's a change in the application, modification to the special use permit to add, you know, to revise that nature of the business, what have you. I mean, Mr. Thomas can speak to otherwise, but it would be our position that the application that's been presented here is clearly for the car wash facility, and that, that's, if approved, that's what would be granted.
And I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. No further questions of staff.
Good, go to Board Member Wood?
No questions.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
No questions.
And Board Member Fields?
Just questioning about lighting on the rear of the car wash to the very east end. And we talked, it was mentioned about the distance from the residential area, and just concerned that there was some consideration put in place for lighting overspill into the, the neighborhood. Was that addressed?
Yes, I'll let that? Again, John Schmidt, agent for the applicant, as part of the site plan approval and even the building permit, no light spill is allowed over the property line.
Any other questions?
No questions.
And this may actually be a question for Mr. Schmidt as well. And it didn't come up, I think, until I saw the video that staff presented, but I noticed in the video that was taken from the rear of the property, there appeared to be a metal swing gate that's currently there, and I didn't know if, just for security reasons after nine P M., if there were any intents to, intentions to have a gate or any closure of the, either the driveways, or if they would just remain open, you know, twenty-four, seven, I couldn't tell from the site plan if?
I think that was part of the, some of the security measures put when it was the, the Olive Garden, but we don't plan any security gates, and the, the video also kind of caught some of those curbing and pavement, you know, beat up that we've, that we've agreed with the neighbors to get fixed up while we're out there as well. But, no, we're not planning on securing, okay.
Yeah, no other questions, so I'll go ahead at this point and open the public hearing. So any members of the public who are present here today and would like to speak on either for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll go to staff and see if there were any, if there was any communication received, either voicemail, email, et cetera, that needed to be read into the record?
None at all.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move into executive session here. So start off with any discussion from Board Member Wood?
Nothing further.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
Nothing.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
Nothing further.
Okay, yeah, Board Member Burgess?
So after hearing testimony and staff's response about the condition, I don't feel like it's warranted to have to put, impose an additional condition for the fuel use since it's already going to have to come back before us if it changes use, and there's a hundred and eighty-day provision already as one of the conditions. If, if they abandon that particular use for a hundred and eighty days, it comes back to us anyway. So just make it clear that I won't be asking for any support for additional conditions or anything.
Okay, yeah, thank you for bringing up that point, I think that's an important, that was an important discussion to have, an important, you know, item for us to consider, because that would be a significant difference from what's in front of us today, and we want to make sure that the appropriate safeguard is in place to prevent that from happening, so. But I agree, from, you know, staff and our attorney, it sounds like, it sounds like those safeguards are in place. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the zoning board of appeals granting zoning, grant zoning boards of appeal case number three, four, zero, nine, a request by John Smiths of Smiths Nichols on behalf of eighteen ninety Palm Beach Lakes OPCO LLC for a Class B special use permit to allow for a four thousand four hundred and fourteen square foot automated car wash facility at eighteen ninety Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the applicable criteria in section ninety-four, dash, three, six, E, three, and four, and sections ninety-four, dash, two, seventy-three, D, forty-six, B of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of this Class B special use permit is subject to the conditions of the approval contained in the staff report dated September first, two thousand twenty-two. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
And can we clarify that with those conditions, you intend with the change in the hours of operations as discussed today by both the applicant and staff? Correct, yeah, so I think below that in the packet is imposed and modified, and we can just refer to, I believe that was condition number two?
Three, A.
Three, A. Three, A.
Three, A.
We'll restate the, the condition. In addition to granting of this Class B special use permit is subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated September first, two thousand twenty-two, with the further condition that number three, A, are modified to read as following. Hours of operation shall be limited to the hours of seven A M. to nine P M. I move that these conditions as modified are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed and intent of the zoning and land development regulation and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Board Member Fields and seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Camara?
Yes.
Michael Hyman, please let the record show that Michael Hyman is absent, Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero, thanks. Congratulations, best of luck. We'll now move into item three, which is zoning board of appeals case number thirty-four, thirteen. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that into the record.
A request by John Schmidt of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of Stewart Petro Holdings LLC for a Class B special use permit to convert an existing car wash into an oil change and quick service business. The subject property consisting of point forty-six acres is located at one, one, two, two Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard with Commission District number three, Commissioner Christie Fox.
Thank you, we'll now have the applicant, please make their presentation.
Good afternoon, city board members, again, my name is Jordan Spurling, agent for the applicant, and today I'll be presenting the proposed take five facility on Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. The point four, six acre subject property is located at eleven, twenty-two Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard on the south side of Palm Beach Lakes and east side of Carver Avenue. The site's currently developed with an existing six-bay self-service car wash that remains out of service. The applicant is planning to repurpose the existing car wash with a proposed two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square foot, three-bay quick oil service building. The site has existing access to Carver Avenue that was established for the existing self-service car wash, as shown in yellow. On the south side of the site, or, excuse me, on the south side of the site is an existing fifteen-foot alley. No new access or modification is proposed in this application. The proposed use falls under the motor vehicle, fuel, sales, and service use category, similar to the prior application, which is a permitted use within the neighborhood commercial zoning classification with issuance of a Class B special use permit. While being used for a self-service car wash, this site already received a Class B special use permit on, in October of two thousand and four, which resulted in the current configuration of the property. And a self-service car wash falls into the same use type as the proposed oil change facility. facility that you're seeing today. As previously mentioned, the sites on the south corner of Palm Beach Lakes and the east side of Carver Avenue, in regard to the surrounding uses, to the north across Palm Beach Lakes is the service station U Gas. To the south is the multifamily residential, which is setback approximately 66 feet from the proposed use. To the east is a single-family residential setback approximately 20 feet from the proposed use. And to the west, across Carver Avenue right of way, is the multifamily residential, Vista Apartments. This slide just represents a few photos of the existing site conditions, starting with a view of the south property line at the top left corner of the screen and a view of the east property line at the bottom right corner. This slide, this slide just shows some of the additional site photos, starting with a view of the west property line facing east at the top left corner and a view of the south property line facing north at the bottom right corner. This slide just shows some of the Take Five developments located in the surrounding area from our client's current locations at Southern Boulevard and Parker, Jog Road and North Lake locations, as you all are probably very familiar with. Here is a colored elevation of the proposed Take Five facility. If you're facing Palm Beach Lakes looking into the site, you'll see the front elevation at the bottom of the screen and the rear elevation just next to it. The white box, as you can see on the front, the rear elevation, is the bypass lane, which I'll explain further on the next slide. The project takes cues from the modern development along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, as you probably have seen from the KFC and the Taco Bell, but we're adjusting it to have more of a domestic character through the use of materials, textures and commercial elements. The building is designed to contemporary style to conform with the Take Five corporate logo, overall design image, and the designated earth tone color is generally compatible with other structures that you see every day along the Palm Beach Lakes corridor. This is the site plan proposed with the Take Five facility. We're proposing to preserve the existing five-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter and fill in some of the dead and missing hedge material and provide some shade trees. We have a condition of approval at a vine on the exterior of the existing buffer wall along the south and east side of property lines to reduce the impact on some of the surrounding residents. As I mentioned before, we're proposing a bypass lane on the east side of the building, which is solely for vehicles to exit after their oil services have been completed. There won't be any services provided or any equipment within this bypass lane canopy along the east property line. This slide just shows some of the product data associated with the facility. As I mentioned, the site is currently developed with an existing six-bay self-service car wash. We're planning an adaptive reuse of the current car wash with a professionally operated and managed three-bay quick oil service facility. I honestly drive by the site every day and I see that the site's struggling and it definitely is in need for an adaptive reuse so we can continue to grow the Palm Beach Lakes corridor. We have city staff recommendation of approval. We're agreeing with the six conditions of approval located on page two of the staff report. Staff found that the proposed use will not adversely affect the surrounding property and it's compatible with the existing and future uses in the area and the Class B permit is in compliance with the city's general use, specific use and additional use standards. And we have our client and development team here to answer any questions you may have and we respectfully request your support for approval. The site's been properly noticed for the property owners within 500 feet of the property. It was advertised in the Palm Beach Post and there's been no inquiries raising concerns regarding the proposed adaptive reuse. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask the board if there are any member, any questions of the applicant. We'll start off with Vice Chair Cameron. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
No questions right now.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
And so it appears that the nine parking spaces out front, that's above and beyond the queuing and stacking of waiting spaces. How many of the spaces identified on the site plan are for the queuing? It's hard to tell from the sketch.
So as you can see, we have, we have the 10 cars as they're on the southern property line, which are dedicated for queuing and then the nine parking spaces along the northern property line.
So 10, okay.
And then one for the turnaround.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Board Member Wood?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions. Okay, this time we'll ask staff to come forward and please make a presentation.
All right, good afternoon, Board. My name is Alex Fokes. I'm a planner with the Development Services Department for the City of West Palm Beach. Here presenting ZBA case 3413 for the Take Five Quick Service and Oil Change located at 1122 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. As mentioned by the applicant, the subject property is approximately 0.46 acres and located at the southeast corner of Palm Beach Lakes and Carver Avenue. The area is primarily single and multifamily residential, as well as some commercial uses along Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. The area is, or the parcel in question is zone neighborhood commercial. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing self-service car wash into a quick service and oil change facility. This falls under the motor vehicle, fuel sales and service use category, which is permitted in the NC zoning district with the issuance of a Class B special use permit. Here you can see the applicant's site plan for the property. The building footprint is not expanding as the applicant intends to utilize and renovate the existing structure. Staff reviewed the site plan at the May 12th, 2022 PPRC meeting. The applicant is working to address staff's comments on the site plan, which is separate from this application. The site has also been subject, or been in front of the board before. On October, on October 7th, 2004, they received, or the site received a Class B special use permit to allow for the self-service car wash facility that currently exists. Right now it stands vacant and the applicant is intending to renovate the existing structure. At this meeting, they received waivers from the zoning land development regulations and those waivers are as follows, where the, they received waivers from the minimum setback of the principal structure from any residential properties, where code requires a 100-foot setback. They were granted an 81-foot waiver from the rear property line, which is along the east property line, and a 60-foot waiver from the requirement from the side property line, which is to the south. They also received a waiver from the minimum setback of signs, pumps, pump islands, tanks, vents and canopies from public right-of-way. Where code requires a 25-foot setback, they were granted a 20-foot waiver. So you can see the monument sign to the northwest of the property is utilizing this waiver and resulted in a five-foot setback from the public right-of-way. Because these waivers are already granted on October 7th, 2004, and the applicant is not proposing any improvements that would deviate from these waivers, it is not necessarily for them to be granted again at this meeting. Here we can see some site photos. This is of the existing facility. Here are some site photos that show the residential properties to the south and the east. Here is a video taken from the front of the lot along Carver Avenue. So given that the site has previously received waivers from the standards that were not met, this, this case complies with all applicable use standards. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with conditions. The conditions of approval can be seen here. The purpose of these conditions are to ensure the safety, privacy and well-being of the surrounding residential properties, as well as ensuring compliance with all the applicable standards. The first three conditions have been brought over from the previous staff report, as they remain relevant to the proposed use, while the remaining conditions are specific to the proposed use, meaning that they weren't in the previous staff report. So, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. I'll ask the board if there are any member, any questions of staff. I'll start off with Board Member Fields.
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
Do the conditions address the location of the fuel storage within the building and the proximity to the residential property lines?
Yes, they do. So they won't be storing fuel on the property. The standards that are currently in the additional use standards are for combustibles, which it's to my knowledge that the motor oil does, does qualify as a combustible, albeit with a very high flashpoint. So the conditions proposed are to limit the size of those storage facilities and maintain that they are contained within the building setback lines to ensure the safety of the surrounding residences in the event of an accident or an issue.
So they're, so it's required to be inside the building?
Correct, yes. Staff is recommending that these, any receptacles, tanks or facilities for the storage of combustibles shall not exceed a quantity of 200 gallons as per the additional use standards and that those receptacles, tanks or facilities are maintained within the building setback lines.
Okay, and since we had previously approved a waiver from the setback line for the current building envelope and the motor oil's in the building, it could technically sit closer to the property line than otherwise would have been allowed if the, that previous approval wasn't in place?
For the record, John, as responsible planner, the previous waiver was with regards to setback from right-of-way. So there was no exceptions granted from adjacent properties?
I thought there was a side setback from 100 to 60 or something like that in the...
That was just for the principal structure?
Right. Yeah, so the principal structure sitting closer to the property line than it would have been, would have been originally allowed. And now we're saying we can put fuel inside that building within that setback?
Correct. It was granted to, they were previously required 100-foot separation from residential.
Right.
And it was previously granted to 81 feet from the side, or excuse me, from the rear and 60 from the side.
Right.
Those would still be applicable.
Right.
And then the tank aspect to it would apply to that as well.
So you could still have motor oil 60 feet away from the residential property because we had previously granted that?
Right, but the actual, the building today is at the line that was granted previously.
But I just, I want to bring that up for executive discussion because I don't know if the proximity of hazardous material closer to the 100-foot reason, is any different from the original context of the original approval, which was a car wash facility closer to a residential property line? So I just wanted to address that question upfront before we get into executive session about whether or not there should be any consideration of locating the motor oil further away from the residential side? Or if just being in the building enough is sufficient?
Well...
But we can get there when we get to executive session.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I have a follow-up question to that, which is the difference between the, and I don't want to jump out of place here, but it's relevant to that question because the, it states within the building setbacks, not within the building. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to necessarily state that the material or that the hazardous substances will be stored within the building. It just says within the building setback lines.
Right, but kind of by default, because the waiver was granted and the building actually sits at that prep, at that waiver line, they couldn't go any closer than what the building already is unless they were to request an additional waiver from that. So by default, it can't go any further south than what the existing building is.
But it may be stored outdoors, not in the building.
Right, but the edge of the building sits at that, at that line, so I don't know if it would be possible, but technically, yes.
Yeah, and I didn't want to hijack the...
Yep, that, that answers my question.
Okay. Board Member Wood?
No further questions.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
No further questions.
Yeah, and I guess I did have a follow-up question to, because I think the, for example, looking at the rear setback, the, the building isn't a perfect rectangle, it's irregularly shaped, so it's possible that it could be stored outdoors, you know, within that rear setback at a part of the building that doesn't go all the way back to the minimum, you know, setback that was, was granted, if that makes sense. I just wanted to clarify that because I, it isn't promised or stated here that the, that those materials would be stated, it would be stored indoors. They could be, they could be stored outside. And I don't know if the applicant, it looks like the applicant may, may want to clarify that further.
John Schmidt, agent for the applicant, would it be all right to revise that condition to require them within the buildings, within, inside the building? Yeah.
I have no other questions of, of staff. So at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to come forward and speak related to this case, please come forward. Okay, and I'll ask staff if there were any other communications, voicemails, emails, et cetera, that need to be entered into the record?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And at that point, I'll close the public hearing. I'll go ahead now and we'll move into executive session. So let me start with Board Member Burgess.
I mean, I, I would support revising the condition to specifically indicate that we intend to keep the motor oil indoors to prevent future, especially given the proximity to existing residential. So by granting that waiver, consider, you know, it, it pushes it closer theoretically to the neighbors and I just want to be sensitive to that. So I'd suggest that we consider that additional revision to the condition.
Okay, so yeah, item, I think it's condition six, state, you know, currently states, "All receptacles, tanks or facilities for storage of combustibles in 200-gallon or less amounts shall be located and maintained within building setback lines." And then, so that would be modified to just say within the building envelope potentially? Which then confirms that it is within the building setback lines as well, but...
Yeah.
Or within the building.
Or within the building, building footprint?
Or as otherwise prescribed by local environmental regulations too. So I think if there's something that restricts it from being indoors that we're not thinking about, I mean, the major issue is just protecting the neighboring properties from spill, so in my mind.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's a, it sounds like the applicant is in, is in support of that as well too. Any other discussion? Board Member Wood?
No, nothing.
Vice Chair Cameron?
Just, just to clarify what the modification is going to be then? Is it just simply, that's number six, that it'll be just maintained within the building, period? Or is there something more that goes with that?
Yeah, within the building and I think, remember Burgess was suggesting also, and I don't know if this needs to be stated explicitly or if it's implied that it, you know, as long as it, you know, complies with applicable environmental standards and may suggest that Board Member Burgess make the motion if you want, you know, to further clarify that language. But again, I'm not sure and the board attorney may, you know, may also have an opinion as to whether or not it's necessary for us to include that or, you know, it's, that's a given for them to operate that they have to comply with environmental...
You could recite that it's located within the building as permitted by law.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Any other discussion, Vice Chair?
No, that's it, thanks.
Okay, and Board Member Fields, any executive discussion?
No discussion, thank you.
Okay. Then I think at that point, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move to grant the Class B special use permit. I move that the zoning board of appeals grant, zoning board appeal, of appeal case number 3413, a request by John Schmidt of Schmidt Nichols on behalf of Stuart Petro Holdings LLC for a Class B special use permit to convert an existing car wash into an oil change and quick service business. This motion is based on the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the applicable criteria in sections 94-36E3 and 4, and sections 94-273D46B of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of this Class B special use permit is subjects to the condition of, conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated September 1st, 2022, with the further condition that condition number six, right, is modified to read as followed. Apologies. There it is. "All receptacles, tanks or facilities for the storage of combustibles in 200-gallon..." gallon or less amount shall be located and maintained within building envelope and all setback lines as permitted by law.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by, uh, member Burgess and seconded by vice chair Cameron. I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Cameron?
Yes.
Michael Hyman, please let the record show that, uh, Michael Hyman is absent. Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the application is approved, five, zero. Yep, congratulations and best of luck. At this point, uh, we'll move on to our next case, which is zoning board of appeals case number thirty-four, one, six. Um, I'll, uh, yeah, turn it over to, uh, board member Burgess real briefly.
Yes, I already submitted my disclosure, but due to ongoing business relationship with, uh, Mr. Rowe, I'll be recusing myself from the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll now have our board secretary, uh, please read this item into the record.
A request by Larry Rowe on behalf of Christopher Warford for a Class B special use permit for construction of a swimming pool within the required front setback. The subject property consisting of point four seven one acres is located at seventy-four, seventeen South Flagler Drive within commission district number five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. And as noted by board member Burgess, he is recusing himself, uh, from this item. Uh, that leaves us with four board members up here, so just as a, um, clarification for uh, those in attendance, that does require, with only four members present, that does require a unanimous vote. At this point, uh, we'll ask the applicant, uh, to please come forward, introduce yourself and make your presentation.
Hello, my name's Larry Rowe, and, uh, I'm with LB Rowe Pools, um, we're looking to get a, a pool moved in this front yard.
Did you submit a PowerPoint?
I think it was just pictures.
I don't know if she got it.
Can I just click on that picture?
That's not your application.
Oh. Probably not, then.
Did he give her that?
Did he send the pictures?
No.
Okay.
You can use, uh, you can use ours if you need to.
Just do the pictures.
Do you have any? Do you have your location map? Which one's yours?
So this house has a pool in the front yard, really small, really old, um, in disrepair. It's not, and it's really, really close to the front door right now. Um, they're doing some modifications to the front of the house, so we're hopefully requesting to, to move the pool ten feet further towards the Flagler. Um, and the pictures that she'll show you, um, all the landscape staying the same, six to ten-foot-high landscape, everything will look the same from the front yard. All we're doing is just gonna put in a new pool in place of the old one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, go ahead and, uh, ask the board members if they have any questions for the applicant. I'll first start with board member Wood.
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Uh, vice chair Cameron?
Yeah, if you, if you could just state specifically the reason to move the pool further to the...
Right, right now, you'll see from her aerial picture, or you can see it's right on the house, um, right now, the way you gotta go in, you basically, if you walked out the door, they had to put a railing so you wouldn't go right into the pool, and the pool's like three foot down, so obviously gonna raise it up with the elevation, and they're putting a new entrance on the front of the house. Um, so we're just gonna move the pool a few more feet away. And like I said, it's in really bad, it's old, um, it's cracked, um, we're gonna put it in, time we renovated it and all, we'd, it'd be just putting a Band-Aid on cancer, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And board member Fields?
And basically, you're stating that visually from outside of the property, everything will still look the same?
Correct, yeah, it, it's beautiful right now, it's got mature landscape, it'll stay the same.
Okay, thank you.
And it's also right across from Suma Beach there, that's one of the main reasons they got it blocked off so they can have a little privacy.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just, in terms of the, and I don't know if I was able to completely tell, especially because the existing pool is kind of irregularly shaped, and this looked like more of a rectangular...
So only one corner's gonna really be encroaching, like the side and, um, the other front part is not, it's just the way the road's at an angle right there, the one corner's gonna be encroaching.
And, and in terms of, I, I can understand the need or desire to move it a little further from the structure to give a little bit of, you know, that space, um, I'm just trying to indicate, um, or understand dimensionally, does the width of the pool change significantly from the existing, you know, pool that's there?
No, and, and, um, like, we have plenty of room to do length if we took out the driveway, and then we have another issue, you know? So, um, we're about the max that we think we can get, um, without changing too many things. We did a similar one right down the street, and it was granted to, uh, ten feet, and, uh, we're just, they're friends, and obviously they wanna, and they're renovating their house, so they wanna try to make this, you know, work. Like, if you were to see it, you'd say, wow, that's crazy, how close it is to the house. And not to mention, right there, the water table's really, really bad, just the mere construction of it, um, right up next to the property would be another, uh, construction nightmare.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I believe in the packet, it showed, um, almost like there's a railing from the door to prevent you from kind of stepping into the pool.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
It's terrible.
And, and again, I, I think from the question regarding the width, I was just trying to confirm, you know, it's not like, you know, if, if you're, if you were to, if it were possible to pick up the existing pool and just drop it, you know, a few feet further east, that's one thing, but if you dropped it a few feet further east and then also tried to widen it to push it further into that setback, um, that, that to me is a little bit, you know, a little bit different, and, and the widest part of the pool, again, just was looking for some confirmation, or, or if you could kind of confirm that it, it, you're not really widening the pool from the current...
No, it's really close, and the other problem is that it's a concrete pool, which is just, I don't know how they built, built this thing back when they did, but it's not good. Um, so yeah, similar width, um, the length's a little longer, but we have plenty of room on the, on the length, I believe anyway, without going, I think we have a ten-foot on the side, and, um, that's where we're starting, so that way we can leave our driveway just where it is.
Understood. Okay. I have no other questions, the applicant, so...
Thank you, guys.
Uh, thank you. We'll, uh, go ahead and have staff come up then and make your presentation.
Hi, Alexis Senglier, front of the board. Um, as Larry just said, the address is seven, four, one, seven South Flagler, and they're requesting a Class B for their pool, um, not meeting the front setback, the property is on a corner lot, Tulsa Flagler and Suma Street. They're asking a waiver for the front setback, they're proposing it to be eleven point three feet, they're waiving a total of thirteen point seven feet, they'll meet all other setbacks, they'll combine with the side, the rear, and the corner. Their justification, as Larry said, was it being super close to the front of the house, they're worried about a safety concern, and also the pool deering in disrepair. So they're asking to move it a little forward, so it's not as close to the front entryway, and they're able to fix up and redesign their pool. These are pictures of the site, as you see, the bushes are super high, there won't be any vision from the street of the pool, it'll stay shaded in like it was and protected. This is a proposed picture of the pool, as you see, it will meet the side corner, it's moving it up forward to the front of the setback, so it's not as close to the front entryway, and they're asking for the eleven point three front setback again. And then this is just the overlay of the existing pool compared to the new pool, as you can see, the existing pool is right next to that front entryway. And then the findings, it complies with the general standards, the specific, um, residential and the standards, and we are recommending approval with conditions. And those conditions would be, they would still need to apply to the landscape requirement. As you can see in the video, there's, if you're walking the sidewalk or you're going through, the pool's protected and fenced in by the high hedges. And staff looked at other options for this proposed pool, and because of the size of the lot and the house and where the driveways are, the most reasonable spot for it would be in that location for the safety and just how the lot is structured right now. Do you have any questions?
Uh, I'll, uh, first go to, um, I don't remember where I left off, but I'll start with vice chair Cameron, any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Uh, board member Fields?
No question.
Okay. And board member Wood?
No questions.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, um, in this case, I know, um, we always run into this on corner lots, uh, so in this case, the front, uh, of the lot is being defined as the side along Flagler Drive, is that correct?
Yep, Flagler is the front.
Okay. And then the side is, is defined as, as along Suma?
Yep, correct.
Okay. And so the only, uh, variance here being sawed is from that front, front setback?
Yep, they, they comply to the corner setback.
Okay. Um, yeah, no other questions of staff? Uh, so I'll go ahead at this point and open the public hearing. Um, anyone who wishes to speak, uh, regarding this case, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and there's a three minutes, uh, for each speaker, so we'll have the time put on the clock, please.
Mr. Chairman, the timer is still, is the issue, so I will utilize in the clock that's at the front door.
Um, can, hello, my name's Douglas Rude, I live at one oh eight Suma Street, which is directly across from this house. Um, before I make my comments, since I only have three minutes, there's been, it's an issue of timing of this meeting because nobody's here in the summer, and I don't know if they did this on purpose, uh, but just me and one other resident could make it here. Uh, the house to the, to the, uh, the north is a seasonal rental, the house to the, uh, west is, um, uh, Snowbirds, the, the net, house next to them is a seasonal rental, uh, the two houses across from them, nobody lives in, uh, yet, they would just finish construction, and there's another vacant lot to the east of me. So there's nobody around at this time, plus, this meeting is called at one-thirty on a Wednesday, I did meet other people that wanted to come here, but they have to work, so the whole timing of this meeting, uh, is just, you know, not, not appropriate. Anyway, um, to start off, um, I built my house many years ago and applied for the same exception. Uh, I only have, uh, sixty feet by seventy-four feet for a building footprint, and so I went, uh, to the board and asked them if I could put my pool in the front setback, and they denied me, and I said, why? Because they said I need a, a hardship, and they said, what's your hardship? I said, well, I have a small lot, and they said, no, that's not a hardship. And they said, there's a specific setback of twenty-five feet, uh, for the pool, and I was denied, okay? The other thing is this submission has a lot of false information, um, including, if you look at the background information, um, it says the house is orientated such that the front door and driveway face Churchill Road. Churchill Road is like a mile away, so I'm not sure what that means. Then it goes on to say that the side of the lot is defined by West Palm Beach standards and practices. That, that has no meaning at all. Um, I, I, I want to point out that this, this request is not for a foot, like you're giving somebody one foot, um, relief or eighteen inches relief. They want virtually fourteen feet to encroach into the required front setback. Uh, seventy percent, or sixty or seventy percent is what I calculated, would be located in that front setback, not a quarter, which was stated by the applicant. Also, in the justification statement, it says the existing pool is cur, currently in the front yard and is in disrepair. Well, I was there and saw the pool, and, you know, these are...
As you're speaking, uh, you need to be in the microphone so we can, can keep it on the record, but, but we can pass, yeah, you can hand those to be passed along, passed around.
Obviously, an aerial, obviously, uh, a pool. Also states that it's close to the front door, it is not at all close to the front door, front door's about thirty feet away. Um, I also want to show you that they also state that this is the best location, and they can't do anything else but put it there. This...
And, and I realize we're having difficulty with the timer, but, um, we're, the time is wrapping up, so I do need you to, to, to just try to conclude.
That's the area that we can, uh, put a pool, so they have a much bigger area, so the pool is not in disrepair.
Okay, and you have to be, be on the microphone, yeah.
Not in, uh, disrepair. Um, okay. Uh, also, uh, it says that recognizing the improvement in value to property, immediate neighbors support the installation of the pool. I'd like to know who that is, because I can't find anybody. We do have two letters from people that I'd like to read, um, I'm surprised the city did not read those letters, 'cause they are not in support of this project, and I'd like to read them now.
Uh, and your, your time's, your time's up, but I, but if you can enter those into the record, we can have them read into the record.
When do I do that?
So, do we, it's, I'll ask staff if they're in receipt of the, the letters?
Uh, if the gentleman can speak to who those letters from, were from, we do have two emails that were received as early as yesterday and today that we were going to include in the record upon conclusion of, uh, in-person comments. If they are the same ones, then, then we have nothing additional.
Can, yes, sir, can you state who the letters are, are from?
Sure, certainly. Um, one is Mary Britton Chatham, and the other one is from Britton Bardis.
Yes, those are the two that we have here, and we're going to provide to you upon conclusion of in-person comments, and I can hand those out now.
Thanks. Well, we'll go ahead, yeah, with the, with the folks that are here in the chambers, and then, as, as staff mentioned, those will be, uh, also read into the record.
So I just want to conclude, if that's okay? Do my summary?
Please, yeah, please, quickly, 'cause, uh, your time is, is a...
So the issues are, there's no hardship, there's absolutely no hardship, and the problem is, if they get approval for this, that gives them an unfair advantage of building a bigger house on their property, because they're moving the pool out of their building's, uh, footprint. So that gives them a, a, a different, uh, zoning, which changes open space in the zoning code, it changes, uh, green space, it, it, uh, changes the setback requirement, and it changes the density, uh, and the massing of the house relative to the size of the lot. So...
Okay, and I, I'm sorry, but your time is up, but thank you very much for the, uh, the comments today, and I think we'll take those all under advisement.
All right, so there's no hardship and, uh, no reason for granting this...
Is there anyone else here in attendance who wishes to speak? Please come forward to the, the...
Better question, yeah.
Good afternoon, so, uh, my name is Peter Applefield, I live at one twenty-two Seville Road, little south of the property. Um, I love this city, I lived in the neighborhood twenty-five years, I love the neighborhood, and yes, we've seen our values... And yes, we've seen our values skyrocket, and, and the city gets credit for that. I've also done a little commercial real estate over the years in the city. I've worked with Mr. Roach and others. I've been treated great. You could do it, I could do an ad for the city, I would do it. The downtown's fantastic, my office is at Como, the Como Building, so, nope, I'm not sure anybody likes this city more than I do, they, they make fun of me for, for that. I have similar views as, as Mr. Rude. I, I feel like our neighborhood's booming, that's great. Our neighborhood's going through some issues that I don't have time to talk about. But, real quick, I'll, I'll stick to the subject. I, I would have liked to have seen a hardship. I feel like there's, there's a precedent, and then there's not a precedent. I mean, I, you can say there's no precedent, but I, I'm not sure the neighborhood's going to be served by a bunch of pools at the ten-foot, at the ten-foot line, with the eleven-foot line. And I'm a reasonable person that says, "Hey, you need a few feet, I'm even three feet, four feet," and there's a real hardship. I'm not sure there's a real hardship, I think this is about developing the property to the max, maximizing the value. These houses that were worth a couple million are now worth ten million. My house that was worth X is now worth four X, and I think this is a developer play to maximize value. And I don't think the neighborhood's served by ten-foot setback from the front line. And I'm, I'm with, I, I don't see a set, I don't see a hardship. I, I'm not sure there's somewhere else to put the pool. I, I don't, I'm very skeptical of the safety issue, and I'm quite skeptical of how bad repair the pool is in. So, I, I don't, I don't, I'm skeptical whether the owner is really being forthright in the reasons, I think it's just about value and development, and I'm not sure that's how we should approach the neighborhood. That's it.
Good, thank you. Is, is there anyone else here from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Well, just a second, there is an opportunity for, you know, for rebuttal or responses to some of these. At this point, as staff indicated, we did receive two emails, so I'll go ahead and read those into the record. The first was from Mary Britton Cheatham, and states the following. "This letter is intended for the Plaine Division of the City of West Palm Beach. My name is Mary Britton Cheatham, and I am the owner of 7405 South Flagler Drive. I've just reviewed an application justification for the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding a swimming pool at 7417 South, South Flagler Drive. I'm the neighbor directly to the north of this property. I'm unable to attend this meeting, but I wanted to write a letter, because I was, not only was I confused by the information provided, which seems sloppily compiled, i.e. Churchill Road is almost ten blocks away, but also I've never given any support for these changes to code. However, in a letter attached to the application states that, 'Recognizing the improvement in value to the property, immediate neighbors of the referenced property support the installation of said swimming pool. I've never met the owner of 7417 South Flagler, nor have I been given the opportunity to review plans or support any changes to code. The fact that this document suggests that I'm in favor of this change is concerning to me. It seems possible that approving what appears to be a minor change to code could pave the way for more substantial allowances for construction in the future. Thank you for your consideration, Mary Britton Cheatham.'" And then, the second item that was received was from Britton Bardis. It says, "I, as a close neighbor to 7417 South Flagler, am writing you in opposition to the owner's request for a variance to move his pool. I'm not in a budding neighbor, but one house removed at 115 Suma Road. I'm a preservationist and deeply concerned about all the new homes that have been built in this charming neighborhood in the last eighteen months. It's very sad to see the changes that are occurring. My opposition comes from the fear that changes in code and variances will destroy the historic charm of this beautiful neighborhood. I hope you consider these comments and what these major changes mean for the future of our neighborhood. Sincerely, Britton Damgar." And then, I'll ask staff if there were any other voicemails or anything else received, okay? So, at this point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for additional public input. I think there, you know, first of all, just in response, I know that there is a, a comment raised about the fact that some people may be out of town at this point. This board does accept not just in, in-person communication, but as you saw in the emails, that, that we do receive either voicemails or, or, or the emails that we received here. So, there are multiple opportunities for people to, to weigh in on this, and, and so I think, you know, that anyone else who was unable because of a work commitment or, or being a seasonal resident, did and does have the opportunity to, to provide communication in, in this format. So, there is a, as far as process goes, and a, you know, an opportunity for people to be heard, there is, there are multiple ways and avenues for that to occur, and we did, again, receive some via email. So, you know, th- these proceedings are always the first Thursday of the month, at 1:30 PM, we accept communication in, in multiple ways to accommodate, you know, the, the input in, in every way possible. We do, as, as there were comments that were stated, I'll just ask the applicant to, to come up and respond to any other, you know, questions or, or comments that, that were raised related to the application.
Again, Larry Rowe. He said that this is about money, and the guy wants to resell it all. This guy's been there since oh-four, and he's not selling the house, he's here for a long term. So, and there's been five, there's been five...
He has the floor, he has the floor at this point.
There's been five more granted to ten-feet-long Flagler. None of them look any different from the street. They're not changing the footprint of the house, they're changing the entry doors on that side, and making it so that you don't fall in the pool right away. But as far as reselling this thing, he's not doing, this is a long-term for him and his family.
Understood.
He's been there since oh-four. So, if he'd have sold it, he'd have sold it last year.
Understood.
I appreciate it.
At, at this point, it, that was really, I think, just to kind of clarify information, you know, we're not, we... Yeah, the public comment at this point is closed, we'll consider everything that's been, that's been heard as we go into executive session.
Thank you.
So, thanks. No, we're, we're in executive session at this point, so we've, I think we've heard the, the items, you know, the, the opinions that have been stated and, and the, the issues that have been brought up. So, I'm, I'm going to turn it now to our board for executive session, I'll start off with Board Member Fields, if you have comments for discussion.
No discussion at this point.
Board Member Wood?
Can we ask staff if they can comment on the irregularities in the statement and that was given to us during the public hearing? About the location and the adjacent properties and so forth that are, that seem to be in question?
Can you clarify if there is a specific concern or item that...
Well, the one comment that was made was that, I can't remember the street, there was one, it's a mile away, and apparently in the...
Yeah, I looked through the staff, unless he received a draft of the staff report, I didn't see where that was the case within there. I did a quick search, and I didn't see, unless there was a, a paragraph where, you know, previous staff report hadn't been updated appropriately. But it does sit on a corner property of Flagler Drive, and then the, the adjacent side street.
Right. Yeah, I believe I, I saw it in the applicant's justification statement, it appears to be probably a cut and paste, a cut and paste issue, so it, it, the applicant's justification is referencing Churchill Road instead of Flagler Drive. So, I, you know, that's, that's the item that was, was pointed out.
I see, okay.
I do want to clarify, if I may, I know you guys are... There was a question or concern about changing the setbacks for the building, and I specifically want to address that, that the application before you is specific to the pool setbacks, and that those are required, you know, with Flagler being defined as the front, the front setback for pools is twenty-five feet. That doesn't, anything that happens here today does not impact building setbacks for future construction, the existing building, anything like that. They, any new construction or addition to the existing building would have to comply with the building setbacks as they are in the code. And today's motion, today's action would not impact that.
Sir, only the people that are up at the, the microphone have the, have the floor, and I, I did, so that was a question I wanted to follow up with staff on, which is that, that the item before us is related to the pool setback, which is, which is what the decision that's been made today. It does not change the building setbacks that would be required, should this, if this were to be torn down, and if the building were to be torn down. A replacement building would have to comply with the building setbacks that has to comply with today, unless they came forward here and asked for a waiver from the building setbacks as a separate future request.
Correct. The building setbacks are even a completely different section of the code than what you're even considering today.
Understood, okay. Sir, I, I'm sorry, the public comments closed. I think we, we did hear the concerns that were raised, and, and this board does take all the input and the concerns, you know, carefully, but, and there's, this is not a back and forth, we're in the executive session at this point.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important to note now that what's before you is whether or not to grant the Class B special use permit. And to grant that, there are the standards, along with the standards for the waiver, which has been presented to you. If the applicant and the evidence presented meets those standards, then the applicant is entitled to the grant. If it doesn't, of course, you would deny it. But before you is the application for the Class B in order to grant the waiver.
Yeah, and, and as far as the proceedings go, as, as it was before, it's deciding on the waiver, and then, should there be a positive? And then, should that move forward, then, then the Class B special use permit would be considered by the board?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, Board Member Wood?
That's all I have.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Roach, if I could, just relative to the issues that have been raised. Thank you. So, at first, it seemed like an innocuous case that we normally get, where somebody asks to reposition the pool. It seemed just a one-off, and the, the main issue seemed to be the proximity to the, the house, and I accept that's the way it is. But the concerns that I hear from the, the neighborhood, which I ask that you can help us address to understand, is, as I understand it, there is complaint that, I'm sorry, sir, what was your first name? That was Rude. That he was treated differently in the past, that's one issue, in requesting a setback. But I, the fundamental question I like, and this really too, is like, what is the overall purpose of a front setback of twenty-five feet? Start to address the issue that was raised by the, in the public comment.
I mean, the purpose of any setback, whether it be a building, you know, an accessory, you know, a main house, an accessory structure, or anything like that, would, would be to make sure that you're protecting encroachment and separation from either adjacent properties or the rights of way, or things like that, making sure that there is that separation to, to minimize the impact of that structure, or that element on that property, from those adjacent properties or rights of way. As, obviously, as part of this, as you can see with the existing house, which, you know, complies, and any new construction would have to comply with setbacks, pools are treated independently of that. Oftentimes, as you've seen before, we look at what are the options on the property with regards to the construction of a pool? What are the locations that are available and, and compliance with the code and so forth? In this one, because of its existing location, the existing location of the house, the existing location of the driveway, and, you know, the proximity of the existing pool to the house and need to, to rebuild it, we felt like the application complied with the standards, that the impact that would be generated, the additional impact that would be generated by that close prox, closer proximity to the right of way, was mitigated based upon the existing conditions of the hedges and the enclosure of that, that space, and therefore, we incorporated that into our condition, and that they would have to do that. It would be a different story if that, if that area was completely open and exposed to, to the adjacent right of way.
So, I see that. I don't see there as a neighbor, it's a road. The, the other concern that I heard from the, the people who made comments during the public comment was that the concern that if this is allowed, there are then going to be a whole bunch of properties in the neighborhood that have pools within ten to eleven feet of the, the front back setback. This is some type of presidential move that will allow everybody in the neighborhood to do this.
No, every, every application, as you're familiar with, is reviewed and provided a recommendation based upon the merits of that application. There's actually standards in our code with variances, for example, that you can't utilize an existing non-conformity or another variance as, as justification for your, your request or for granting the, the approval if that, if that were the case. So, each one is reviewed on its own merits, you've seen them before you before, and, you know, we evaluate each of those criteria for that specific application. So, granting one here does not guarantee that they would happen, you know, the adjacent property, or the, you know, two properties to the north or, or further north on Flagler.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at this application, you know, I think, obviously, if, if this lot were, if there were no house on the lot today, and we were coming in, you know, with a, if there were a request made to, to do that, you, you know, that's a, a condition where, you know, that's, that's more of a, you know, self-imposed, of what you, you know, would typically be called a self-imposed hardship. In this case, I think, you know, looking at the, the existing railing and steps and condition that are in place to prevent somebody from, when walking out that existing door directly pretty much into the pool, shows, you know, I think, it, you know, certainly outlines an issue with, with the location of, of the, where the, the pool is today in terms of, you know, sort of accessibility and, and being able to, you know, and the functionality of that area. One of the exhibits that was passed around was one that highlighted a, you know, the, the areas that were within the twenty-five-foot setback, but all them, if you try to place a pool within that, has the pool basically right up against the building. So, that, you know, is the, the reason for the request. You know, I know staff spent a good bit of time, as they do always with all applications, thoroughly reviewing this in comparison to the standards. In this case, there are a couple of conditions that, that were in place, you know, I think to help mitigate any of the, any of the negative impacts that could be raised, and I think a couple of board members have, have brought those up in the executive session, which is, I think the primary negative impact is, is just the visual one, and, and we have a staff condition that speaks to that, which is maintaining the, the hedges and the, the screening, you know, for that, that pool area. As staff has stated, this does not confer any other ability of the applicant to, to expand the building setbacks or build a, a larger house or anything along those lines. That, that doesn't, that, that is a completely separate and apart from this application. Really, what's before us today is, is looking at if, if this pool, if the existing pool were to be removed, and a replacement pool is to be built a little bit further away from the house, giving it a little bit more separation, whether or not we're willing to approve that with the fact that it does, that, that that new location does, does go into the front yard setback. So, again, I think we have to, we heard a lot today, we have to, you know, limit our deliberations and our, you know, our rendering of fact on this, on what is before us today, not speculation on, on whether a house can be torn down and a bigger house built, et cetera, et cetera. That's not before us today, and, and again, that, that's what we as a board need to focus on, which is simply the, the matter that's in, in front of us. So, I think we've, you know, we've, we have heard the concerns of the, the public. I understand, you know, the, the, the concern of neighbors, but as noted, again, this doesn't also, this also does not create, you know, set a, a, now a blanket approval for, for others to do that. In this case, we have an existing building location on the site that is, is driving the, the reasoning for the matter that's in front of us today. So, with that, at this point, if there's any other discussion from the board, we can have that, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. Sir, I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed. You did have more than the three minutes that's, that's allowed of time, and we should not even be in this back and forth right now, because we're in executive session. So, I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn to the board for a motion at this point, please.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the waiver for zoning boards of appeals case number 3416, as listed in the staff report dated September 1st, 2022. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that all of the applicable criteria in section 94-273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Motion has been made by Board Member Fields. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Fields and seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. I'll ask the Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Cameron?
Yes.
Michael Hyman, please let the record show Michael Hyman is absent. Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Okay, the waiver has been approved four to zero. Now in front of us is the Class B special use permit. Is there a motion on that?
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant zoning boards of appeals case number 3416, a request by L.B. Rowe, Inc., on behalf of Christopher Woolford for a Class B special use permit to construct an accessory swimming pool within the required front yard setback of the property located at 7417 South Flagler Drive. This motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted to the, and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the applicable criteria in section 94-36E3 through 5 and section 94-304E2 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of Class B special use permit is subject to the conditions of the approval contained in the staff report dated September 1st, 2022. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Motion has been made by Board Member Fields. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Board Member Fields, seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. I'll ask the Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Christopher Cameron?
Yes.
Michael Hyman, please let the record show that Michael Hyman is absent. Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Okay, the Class B special use permit has been approved. I'll go now to the next item on the agenda, which is there are no administrative appeals. There's then unfinished business, of which there's none. New business, none. And then other business. That's the nomination, election of officers for the next year. Sir, 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 you're out of order. We're on, we're onto the next item on the agenda. Sir, sir, we're out of order. Mr. Roach, we're on to other business.
Yeah, so as in accordance with the bylaws, September of every year, the ZBA is to nominate and elect their officers for the following calendar, I guess it would be fiscal year more, in a way. So from October until the following September. So I believe Mr. Hagan has served a couple of years and has Mr. Cameron, but it's at the will of the board to nominate and elect their officers.
Those officers are chair and vice chair.
That is correct, yes. Thank you.
The floor is open for nominations at this time?
Yeah, I'll nominate, I'll nominate Christopher Hagan as chairperson and Mr. Christopher Greenwood as vice chairman.
One at a time.
One at a time, all right. Christopher Hagan as chairperson.
I move nominations to be closed on said name. Second.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear.
So we're treating this as normal motions? Okay, yeah, so I think it was moved by Board Member Wood and then we could treat either Mr. Fields or Mr. Cameron's as a second to that, to that motion. So.
Mr. Fields move to close nominations.
Yeah.
Well, then we'll open it to a vote. So all of those in favor of Mr. Hagan being chair, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No? Okay. And then, so that will leave a nomination and vote for vice chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Christopher Cameron as vice chairman.
Whoops.
I guess, brought the lights down.
We didn't do that quite fast enough. Okay, so nomination from Mr. Fields for Mr. Cameron as vice chairperson?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Hagan, Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm happy to serve in this role again and appreciate, appreciate all of you as well, too, on the board. It's a pleasure working alongside each and every one of you.
And just to give you an update, most importantly, thank you all for your service to the ZBA and, you know, your diligence. And each month, oftentimes exciting. So, but your cooperation in attending the meetings and establishing the quorum is much appreciated. We know during the summer months, it's a little bit harder with vacations and things like that. We are in the process of continuing to try and fill the second alternate position. It's my understanding that there is a potential candidate, so they're going through that process right now to be reviewed and then nominated by the mayor. So hopefully that pans out. I'll continue to keep you updated on that. Obviously, that'll help with establishing the quorum, as well as those circumstances where we only have four members who are voting and a unanimous approval is, or a unanimous vote is necessary to approve the motion. So we understand that presents some challenges. So we're going to continue to work to fill that and, but we appreciate your cooperation throughout the, throughout the year.
Thank you, John. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move and see if there's a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moves that we adjourn the meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, means adjourned.
Thank you.